Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board's June 11th, 2018 meeting. I'm Tom Jacobs. We're gathered at the Bennington Firehouse Facility in the multipurpose room. We have an interesting agenda tonight, and as we normally start, we introduce ourselves. And I think Jean's just recovering from Italy, just arriving back in the country. So this is her first miss, but it will be noted, this is her first miss, but she's not here in the record. So the minutes will be reflective of that. Carson?
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Lila, Secretary.
And she's been working overtime the last couple days. Thank you all. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Would you like to lead us, Donald?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to start a little bit out of the order, not out of order, I hope. This past weekend, we had the privilege and honor of celebrating a bit of Bennington's history. A hundred years ago, on June 10th, 1918, the first patients were admitted to Putnam Hospital. And it wasn't Jim.
That was in the psych ward.
Anyway, it was a great holiday celebration that we all enjoyed across the spectrum, from the gala on Saturday night to the Community Day, which was celebrated by almost 4,000 people. Great organization. Carson will probably have to recuse himself because he was a big part of that process. But I would like to, tonight, just recognize the asset that we have on our hill. It's basically the heart of our community, albeit it's on the highest point that we have. We have a suggested proclamation recognizing the anniversary, and I would defer to the Vice Chair if you would do me the honor.
Gladly. So, nobody's seen this yet, but here we go. Proclamation honoring the hospital's 100th anniversary, whereas the Putnam Hospital, now known as the Southwestern Vermont Healthcare Corporation, the hospital, has served the Bennington community for 100 years; and whereas the hospital opened on June 10th, 1918, as a 30-bed community hospital, has grown into one of New England's leading rural healthcare systems, achieving national and regional recognition as a preeminent institution; and whereas the hospital has been designated as a Magnet Center for Nursing Excellence for four consecutive times, in 2017, the hospital won the Magnet Prize for its Transitional Care Nursing Program, awarded annually to only one hospital worldwide; and it is accredited by the Joint Commission and recognized as a top performer on Kelly Quality Measures, and has received workplace honors from both Vermont Business Magazine and Becker's Hospital Review; and whereas in the fall of 2017, the Center for Living and Rehabilitation earned a prestigious five-star rating from the Centers for Medical and Medicaid Services; and whereas, as much as the hospital has evolved, it remains an integral part of the fabric of our community; and whereas, the future of the hospital and our town are directly linked. A strong Bennington will help assure our citizens that our valued healthcare system will continue to thrive. Now therefore, the Bennington Select Board does hereby recognize, proclaim, and congratulate the hospital on its wonderful past, and joins with the hospital in its desire to provide our citizens with an excellent standard of healthcare to meet the community's needs for many years to come. Dated at Bennington, this 11th day of June, 2018.
Thank you. The Select Board has heard the proclamation read. I will accept a motion to accept the resolution and proclamation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify my aye.
Right.
That's six in favor, and no abstentions or objections. At this point, I'd like to have everyone sign the proclamation and deliver it to Tom D., who is representing the hospital, as he is the CEO and President, and is with us tonight. Tom will present this to you. Do you have any comments, questions, or thoughts relative to the Select Board and the hospital's future?
Why, just like?
Maybe, probably, yeah, better, just for that, yeah, just get it closed, you otherwise...
The rock star.
You got it. He's done this before.
Thank you very much, Tom. And I want to thank the Select Board. Your partnership with us has been terrific. We are very, very honored to have this proclamation and working with you and the town. You know, how our hospital has changed from a little small hospital on the hill to really a regional health system now, that represents, has locations in three states and treats over 100,000 patients. We're very fortunate. But it's really the support we have from the community. It's been remarkable. In my short period of time here, nine years, the amount of people who travel through our doors, who support the hospital by using their facilities, as well as their financial support, has really been remarkable. And we're very proud of what we've been able to do, and what we hope to continue to do as we work with all of our community members, and this organization, and others, in terms of our vision 2020, which is building our healthcare system based on building partnerships, transforming how we provide our care, and continuing to be financially sustainable. So thank you for this honor tonight, the proclamation, and we'd love to come back and talk more about the future of the healthcare system as we continue to evolve.
And we'll be looking forward to that, Tom, because it's a changing world out there, and it's kind of exciting to be a part of that in a lot of ways. And the Select Board would like to represent the town as a partner in that effort, and I have no doubt that in the next few years, this board will be a real partner in that process. Stu, would you like to present that?
I agree. Thank you very much.
Stand up straight, Stu. Thanks very much, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Yes, please.
...make a few remarks. For those of you who don't know, the very first child born at Putnam Memorial Hospital was Justine Scanlon, Stu Heard's wife's boss, John B. Hart. And the reason I know that is because my father followed John B. Hart very shortly after that, being born at Putnam. And I just want to note, and Tom knows this, because when my mother died, the hospital was very kind to remember my mother's death. My mother was the nighttime director of the hospital for nearly 30 years. And the role that it's played in my life, even in my recent hospitalization in March, Tom was making the rounds on the different floors, and he happened to come by my room and came in and he said, "What the hell are you doing here?" But anyway, it was what impressed me, is that, you know, you could just as easily sat in your office and let the hospital run itself, but you made it a point to go and see the people that work with you and see how things are going. I was very impressed by it.
Thanks, Jim. Okay.
Consent agenda. The consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm going to go right in. Yeah, thanks. The next section of our agenda is the standard consent agenda. We do have the May 21st, 2018 minutes that have been circulated, along with the warrants that have been reviewed by yours truly, and I expect others. I'll consider and entertain a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda, shared.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Lovely to see that $16,000 net metering tax credit in there.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
More to come, right? The hearing, no further discussion, all in favor of the consent agenda circulated, as I signify my aye. There's six in favor, no abstentions or objections. We now have a citizen's comment period. We have circulated our citizen comment sign-in sheet, but you suggest there's no...
We had no one sign up.
Okay.
Don't ask me, ask the Chair.
Please, the Chair recognizes you. Go ahead, Stu.
I just wanted to share a quick announcement and reminder that the Stark Street pop-up park is taking place this Saturday and Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. I would like to extend our invitation to the Select Board, to, of course, the town offices. And again, just really thank Buildings and Grounds and Department of Public Works for how wonderful they've been in helping us in putting this event together. There will be temporary bike pedaling on Dewey Street, so there will be bike rides, some demo playground equipment. We've cleared a new trail by the park to create a new walking loop. So lots of fun things. Come tell us what you'd like to see of this park in the future.
So it's like a preview of coming attraction type of event?
Mm-hmm, and a chance for us to get feedback from the community about how they would like this park to be brought back to use.
Great.
And just one more thing, as we're trying to, you know, be respectful of the quiet neighborhood street character of Stark Street, so we're encouraging people either to walk or to cycle and to park, if possible, at the Elts parking lot or at the town lot behind the town offices. And the hospital has also, you may know this already, Tom, agreed to let us use some of their parking, some parts of their parking lot as well. So there'll be signs directing you to the park and to the parking.
Any questions for Stu? Looking forward to hearing the report on how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the individual from the Aldrich...
Jason, you're up.
Oh, Jason, sorry.
This is Jason Booth from Aldrich &amp; Elliott. He'll be presenting the wastewater treatment facility engineering agreement and the loan application for what I'm calling Phase Two, which is the rest of the project other than the RBCs.
In our packet, we got the, basically, a complete package, because we have to sign on to it. But if maybe, Jason, you could, rather than going through each and every item, give a servant executive report relative to it.
Sure.
Thanks, Jason.
So the two items on the table tonight for discussion are the construction loan application. That is for Phase Two, as Stu put it, which is also what we're kind of calling the main plant upgrades, so everything but the RBCs, which will include the screenings building, the control building upgrades, the primary and secondary digesters, and some significant electrical upgrades. And so the construction loan application basically rolls everything for that phase, being Phase Two, into one consolidated loan for the town. And this is a typical final phase that we have to go through. So that final application is for $5,345,000, which is the total project cost to date, and that includes, sorry, I should say, total project cost excluding the RBC work. And that includes the construction, contingency that's carried, standard on the project, engineering, permit fees, and other administrative fees that are associated with the project.
As I see, this has been approved by the appropriate authorities at the state level?
So it's been reviewed. The construction loan application has been reviewed by the state. It hasn't been approved yet. It needs to be executed.
Executed, okay.
Yep, so the Select Board has to concur and sign off on it. Then it gets submitted to the state for their final review and then processed.
Okay. I think I asked that same question on the step two, maybe one, relative to the form is the form, it's been approved by, accepted by the state, subject to the...
That's correct. That's correct. So, you want me to proceed with the second document?
Yeah, go ahead, Jason. No, please.
So the second document is the Engineering Services Agreement associated with this phase of work. As with before, you've probably seen this document. It's called the Engineers' Joint Contract Document, EJCDC. It's a pretty comprehensive standard document that the state has accepted for use on construction projects. It details the scope of work for this phase, which just briefly includes bid phase services, construction administration services throughout the duration of the project, resident onsite representative throughout the project, and then special services, which include warranty services, startup and operator training services, record drawings, and so on and so forth. So those are all included in the Engineering Services Agreement. So to answer your potential question, this also has been reviewed by the state and has been approved. I believe Roger Bergeron sent out his approval of this pending acceptance by the Select Board. So the state has reviewed and concurred with this. From an overall budget perspective, the project is pretty much rate where we had expected it to be, from the last round, which I believe was in November, I think, November timeframe, October-November timeframe.
Okay. That was, you anticipated a question, I'm sure a couple of us were going to ask you. But we're pretty much on budget, on schedule. Is it, it looks a little over, isn't it, a little over a million?
There's, so there's, it's about $45,000 over what it was before. So it's pretty, it's pretty close. It's still, that carries a contingency as well in there. So it is, but it is a little bit, since the, I believe, the, like I said, October, it's about $45,000 over. There are some, the construction cost has increased slightly. There have been some things that have been added in as we've moved along and warranted. I mean, good additions that have been discussed with Public Works and with the town through review meetings. And some of those things add some cost to the construction cost of the project.
So the 217 is the, is the only, is the full contingency amount?
So that's, so that's the contingency we're carrying, and that's what, that's what's being carried in the construction loan application. That all being said, this is well within the actual bonding capacity. I believe we're somewhere around 9.1 million total for this project and for the RBC project, which is within the $9.8 million bonding capacity. So, so yes, that is the contingency we're carrying currently for this project, but there is still flexibility and capacity in the overall bonding capacity for the project, if it were to be necessary. But we're pretty comfortable with that contingency. It's a 5% contingency on construction, which is a standard contingency that's carried going into this phase of work.
Okay, great, thank you. When will it be the next reconciliation of the project?
So I would say that we will have intermediate milestones for budgetary updates. Probably the next largest update and most comprehensive update will be after we open bids on the project, which we're expecting to be sometime in early July. We've set the bid opening date for July 20th. So at that point, we'll know what the contractor, whoever bids on the project will know what the bid price is. Subsequent to that, I would say that once the RBCs are complete, which would be prior to December 31st, we'll have another budgetary, formal, probably more comprehensive budgetary update.
Great. How broad is the bid base, how broad is the bid base group or companies?
How many bidders?
Normally, yeah.
Yeah. So for something of this size, we're probably looking at maybe three, maybe four bidders, tops. There are a handful of contractors that do work in this area of this size and of this complexity. It's a rather large multidisciplinary project, so, you know, there's a handful of contractors that I would expect to see. I know that we've already had some reach out to us with some interest. We'll probably have a better handle on that after our pre-bid meeting, which is scheduled for the 19th of June. We'll see who shows up. We'll also have a better handle on who has plans out through the plan holders list.
So like the RFPs are already out there?
That's correct. So the project was advertised for bid on June 6th.
Okay. Okay. Carson?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Nothing.
Stuart, is there anything that you picked up in this that we are not noticing? It looks to me like it's on budget and it's what we're expecting.
It's actually, it's, from my perspective, it's better than on budget, because we're, we have a tremendous, as Jason has pointed out, a $9.85 million bond, and we're only around 9.1 million. So we've got a great cushion there, and we're very hopeful that the bids will be very competitive. I've actually had some contact today from a couple of firms that I haven't been able to get back to, but, so there is some interest out there, and I'm hoping the more the merrier in this case.
Yes, okay. Thank you, that's all from me. Jean?
Nothing.
Great. Jason, thanks, unless there's something else that you feel that you need to add?
Yeah, just one thing, just to add, I do want to say that your Public Works Department and your wastewater staff in particular is doing an incredible job with the RBC install and upgrade. And I want to say that I think that the town of Bennington is pretty fortunate to have a wastewater staff that is both capable and willing to do that work, and I think that you should be lucky, you should feel lucky, and they should be commended for that work. They've done a fantastic job.
That's, you know, that's appreciated, because, you know, we were a little bit restive, you know, by making the home team step up, and they stepped up from what you're...
100%, 110%, absolutely.
The record will indicate that your comments and also our conclusions that we're fortunate to have the leadership and team that we have over at Wastewater. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Tom, we would need a motion to accept both the engineering agreement and the loan application and authorize the manager to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing all in favor of the motion? Aye. Six in favor and no opposition. Anything else you need on that subject?
Well, we're good now. Jason, thank you. Thanks for making the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get home before dark.
I'll hope for that. I'll hope for that.
That's going to happen. Our manager's report is ready to go.
Yes, this is the, this is an unusual place for the manager's report.
Yep.
A change that was requested by the Chair and the Vice Chair to bring my comments slightly forward, and I really have only one action item this evening. The Four Corners North Group is seeking permission to close County Street from North Street to School Street from 8:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. on August 4th, 2018, for the annual Home Brew Festival, which has been a very successful event over the last couple of years. So I would be seeking a motion from the Board to allow for the closure on August 4th under the times allotted.
So moved.
I'll entertain a motion as a...
Second.
Yep. Any other discussion? None.
Great event.
Signify by acceptance with a six in favor and no opposition. Yeah, that's a becoming, it's a fourth annual, third annual?
Oh, God, please.
It's getting up, you know?
It's in that range.
Yeah.
I wasn't prepared to...
It is, it's always a hot, beautiful day to taste the craft products.
It's free beer.
It's all relative. Okay.
Just one other, one other point. The, on the wastewater treatment facility upgrades specifically to the RBCs, we have replaced two rows of eight RBCs now, and the state gave us permission to pull a third row offline slightly early, because they were beginning to fail and create odors for us. So we are taking those, that row offline with state permission. The two rows that are in place, at least the first row, is functioning extremely well. So we're getting a better, better cleanup of the wastewater passing through that than we were achieving with all 24 units, because they're so old and so deteriorated. So we will be pulling that other row offline, chlorinating, repairing, in anticipation of the next, the third row of RBCs to be delivered, which probably will not occur until August, unless the RBC manufacturer can accelerate their process, but we don't think that's going to be possible.
So, how many are operational right now? Eight?
Twenty-four.
Twenty?
Eight are fresh.
The fresh, yep, yep. And then the next row is going to come on, and will some of those come out of the old, the old line or something? Will it be 16, meaning take the old ones out of service?
Row three is in process of coming in.
Great, it's interesting. Any questions?
When we had the failures, was it last summer, and the odors and whatnot, how many of the units were down? How many units have to go down for the system to start failing like that?
One.
Really?
If you want to stop turning, it may cause the odor.
So is what we have...
Move and not grow.
I understand. Is what we have for rows adequate to keep up with the anticipated demand in terms of that smell thing?
I think of it like a filter. You know, the new ones are like a brand filter in your car, and all these old rows are all like plug-salved filters. So the brand new ones are working like, one row is working like another three behind, you know, so they're doing more than everything else. So with two rows, like three new rows up and running, like, you know, we're building a new roadway, so I think that this is a big change in our product.
And once you get all three up, then the efficiency will take some of the pressure off individual ones?
Sure, yeah. Problem is that row three, as Stu was talking about, is just failing quicker. We can't keep it going. They're just self-destructing. They're trying to self-destruct.
And must know it's on its way out.
Death rows.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
Well, it does seem a little risky to take it offline right before summer with the heat high and everybody outdoors and windows open and whatnot, but...
It's going to grow a lot quicker than the number ones, so I think that the heat may be a good thing.
Okay.
We got rid of that row, so there's nothing to smell.
Okay.
And by chlorinating it, it killed it in that row.
In that one row, yeah. I see. Okay. Any other questions, Stuart? Before we get to rates.
Do you want me to talk about kosher now?
Oh, yes, please, Dan, do that.
Dan, which, you have something, an update?
Just a quick, kind of FYI.
Yep.
Just want to make sure the board's aware. Benny gave you a comprehensive update on the pathway projects a couple of weeks, or a couple of meetings ago. And as you know, the kosher drive project, we do believe, is over budget. So the Regional Commission is preparing and will be submitting later this month, June 20th or 22nd, I believe it is, an application for additional funding. We do, we have gotten signals that it's likely to be funded. It does come with a 20% match. It's a $150,000 grant application. However, the good news is, Aldi's, when Aldi's constructed their addition, they paid an impact fee of about $55,000. So we expect that the match will be covered by that particular funding source. So, but we did want to make sure you folks knew that that application was going to be submitted, and you'll see if we are awarded a grant agreement that you all would have to approve before we could accept the funds.
When would that come through if we...
We hope, I think it's September.
Okay.
So we hope to salvage this construction season and get that thing going. If not, it'll be, we'll be ready to go first thing in the spring.
And will that project start on the west side or the east side?
It's a good question. It'll be, it'll really be up to the contractors, as, you know, how they... Obviously, the key is going to be making sure that we keep that intersection open.
I mean, most of the project is, that intersection is the real...
That's the meat of it, yeah. And we, they're, one of the biggest reasons that the cost has gone up is we have to upgrade the conduit underneath the roadway in order to facilitate additional wiring. So there's going to be boring, it's drilling, et cetera, so that, that added significant cost. But it shouldn't affect the actual functioning of the intersection, so we don't have to do an open dig or anything.
Dan, is that impact fee something that gets paid at the time of construction?
It's already been paid, it's in, it's sitting in our...
Something that we hold at this point?
It's in reserve.
No question about having it for the match?
Yep. Just to backstretch on that, Aldi had the opportunity or the option to either construct the pathway at the time that they constructed the, their building, or put in what we thought was a fair amount, and actually, the amount that we asked for, they thought was, was less than what they would have cost them to build it, so we were happy to work it out with them.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Just wanted to let you guys know what we're...
No, it's helpful.
Thank you.
Stuart, I think we, the next item happens to follow, it's our responsibility to set the annual water and sewer rates for 2018 and '19. We did have a budget session a couple of Saturdays ago, I think it was on, what, the second?
Right, we did review these rates at the time the budgets were adopted, but what we are proposing this year for FY 2019 is a proposed quarterly rate for water of 135.77. That's the flat rate. That's the flat rate and the flat rate for sewer would be 99.26. The water rate is a 2% increase, the sewer rate is a 4% increase and we explained that during the budget process. The cost per gallon, per 1,000 gallons, I'm sorry, will, in the water fund, move to $5.03 per 1,000 gallons. In the sewer fund, $3.45 per 1,000 gallons. The percentage increase is the same and the meter surcharge rises with those at the same rate. So I would ask for your approval of those rates for the coming year, beginning July 1, 2018.
Okay, this is on the water rate?
Have to be done separately or do you?
Want to do that separately?
You can do them, it probably would make sense to do them separately so that you're dealing with the water fund and the sewer.
I think the, so the public understands.
And just for the benefit of the public who likely don't, they don't have this information, sitting around.
Maybe do a motion and then bring that up.
We're also just commenting that, what the increases mean, so FY 18, FY 19, the 2% increase, I mean, I know it's easy, but, so it's 133 going to 135, $95 going to $99, so the dollar amounts per quarter aren't a massive amount, but as you speak into them as a percentage, it can be.
A shock.
A little bit of a shock.
Well, so would you like a motion to approve the water rate as indicated?
Yep, which is basically.
135.77?
Yes. Well, I think we needed on both the, the flat rate as well as the metered rate, so I think it's a two.
Okay, a motion to approve the water rate as indicated.
Yep, which is a 2% increase. Does that fair to characterize it that way, Stu?
That would work, yeah.
So.
Make a motion for a 2% increase in the water rate.
Okay, a second?
Second.
And the discussion, as Carson has pointed out, the actual dollar amounts on a quarterly basis, again, not to be too redundant, but it goes from 133.11 to 135.77. So that's our four, our quarter bill. Yep. And so, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all signify by aye. That's six in favor and no opposition or abstentions. The sewer side of it, Stu, again, it's an increase using, and could I get a motion for, and the dollars, is it 4% increase? Could I get a motion for that, for discussion?
Yes, so a motion to approve a 4% increase.
A second?
Second.
Discussion on that, and that goes back to, the flat rate goes from 95.44 quarterly to 99.26, the meters, you know.
I think it's an important time that we reemphasize that, even though it is, Carson, I just want to echo what Carson said, although 4% sounds like a real shock, the difference really is about less than $4 increase. The increase for the sewer is about $16 a year.
Yeah, yep. And not to blindside, just, where do we stand in the state approximately, or where do we stand in the state relative to our?
Oh, I think we're, we're now probably in the, I'm going to say the upper third. And principally, we've raised our rates over the years really to account for the fact that we were not budgeting for depreciation. And I say we, past boards have not done that in order to keep the rates actually artificially low. We're now doing that on an annual basis. We're managing the funds very well. I thank Melissa Curry, our finance director, for keeping us on tap and on track with that. And I think we're, we're higher than the midpoint, but we're certainly not the highest water and sewer rates in the state of Vermont.
When I first got on the board, I was, I was fat, dumb and happy, not necessarily in that order, because the rates were really pretty flat. And then I think about the first meeting I sat in Water and Sewer, it like, I became less happy and less, and more rested. So it's been a catch-up and it probably, you know, thanks to Melissa's and the town managers' efforts, I think we now are at that point where we recognize the fact that we have to pay for the services that we get. And that's this year.
Well, we had a big conversation at the last meeting, if you weren't sort of tuned into that, about depreciation and contingency and all sorts of other anticipated in the future. And it was brought home, I thought, very well by Melissa and others that the cost of everything else goes up 2% or 3% a year. And if, if we are buying a lot of things and making a lot of expenditures at that rate, it's, it's difficult not to have a loss in quality of the service provided. And so the 4% is, was difficult for this, this board to get around, but I think it's, there's still a big, there's still a lot of work to do because this doesn't get us out of the woods and we need to, as, as we've all talked about, we need to just be really aware of the fact that sewer costs are going to continue to go up for a while. And I know you're talking.
Certainly, we're going to, we're going to see, and we've talked about this, we're going to see another large impact next year. You'll recall, we, we committed approximately $50,000 from the fund balance to keep this rate at 4%. So we'll be, we'll be looking at a myriad numbers of ways to try to mitigate the fact that the remainder of the bond will be in play next year. We'll have to begin paying that down. And we also have an increase in depreciation because of the improvements to the plant that will be made over the coming years. So we've got, we've got our work cut out for us.
I think let's move on this year's situation and.
Let's just further discussion, all in favor of the sewer rate being established at 4% increase? Six in favor, no abstentions or objections. Anything else, Stu?
No, that's good, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Melissa and the staff. That was a helpful discussion we had that Saturday morning for three hours. We learned that, you know, these are times when you have to pay for what you use and if you don't, if you use it but you don't pay for it, you can run into a real problem.
Get further and further behind.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We, we got circulated not too long ago, a draft policy of the purchasing and arrangements that the town has and is part of our responsibility as a select board under the charter. We are responsible to look at policies and particularly of those that impact the financial situation of the town. I'm thinking rather than have a grand discussion at this table at this moment, that maybe a subcommittee of the board could take a run at it and see if you could come up with some suggestions relative to accepting it whole cloth or modifications or otherwise and not anticipating any volunteers, but if.
I'll take that.
Would you?
I'd be happy to help out with that too, Tom, if it's a work group, not a, not a subcommittee, more like a work group.
Exactly, we're not going to, it's not going to be a formal committee, it's just, you know, like three of you.
Do.
You could have Chad, because he's, no, I'm only saying that. Would you have time to do this, Chad? Or is this going to be right in the middle of your?
Jim wants it, he can have it. I'm kind of busy in the summer.
No, that's, you know, that's.
You're thinking math teacher, right? Somebody who might keep Carson and me honest.
I'm good at correcting people.
Our work committee is going to be Carson, Jim and Donald. Thank you very much for volunteering. I don't usually get volunteers. That's really good, it's helpful.
Thank you guys.
And I call.
You didn't see what's next on the agenda? You're signing up for something else.
Yeah.
You're going to become the new solar czar. Larry and RJ need help cleaning out those.
The RBCs. Yeah. It wouldn't be a meeting without having a discussion about some solar project and Dan's here to speak to one that I believe has already been before the planning commission.
Yes. So a nice thing is the past couple of projects that we've seen, take into account our preferred sites that the planning commission worked hard to identify and that the select board adopted in the energy, revised energy plan. And this is yet another preferred site, a proposed for a solar project. The site is virtually invisible to adjacent properties. It is, as I mentioned, a preferred site. The planning commission believes that it complies with all the requirements of the town plan and that it also meets the requirements of the solar screening ordinance. So the planning commission has recommended that the select board support this project as one that complies with the requirements that we hope all, that we would hope all projects comply with. They went so far as to say it's, it's a model project, so.
Good to hear that.
The planning commission.
The, are we going to probably see fewer interest in these projects relative to the way the state's going to be looking at these?
Based on my discussions with solar developers, this kind of is a last push. I wouldn't expect you to see significant projects coming before this board that are already in the works in the next couple of years unless there's significant change, policy change at the state. The state has changed the incentives so that after July 1, I believe, they are significantly reduced for solar projects. And so unless a, unless a developer has already purchased a property and has a project in the works and has spent significant funds already, unlikely to see a plethora of projects in the near future with regard to solar. So that could change if, if, if policy changes are made at the state level, but given federal and state incentives at this time, I would say it's probably the last project other than, other than a couple that are already in the works that you're going to see for a while.
Good, thanks. Did you need anything more than a?
Nope, nothing, nothing more, just if you folks did have concerns, we would certainly relay those to the Public Utilities Commission as well as to the applicant. If you have no concerns, obviously, there's no action required, but if you wanted to express support or any, any other sentiment that's certainly within your project.
It looked to be very consistent with the existing town plan, but the applicant's not here tonight, huh?
Uh, no, I didn't, we, I didn't request that they attend, but basically because of the planning commission's resounding expression of support. But certainly, if you felt that you'd like them to come, they could come to a future meeting. This is just a 45-day notice, they have not actually submitted to the Public Utilities Commission.
Dan, did you factor in, was timber access figured into this? Is there an adequate way for them to get in and out to manage the, the backland that's behind this project?
Given the size of that parcel, it's 83 acres and this is only a few acres of that, it's, there's adequate access.
So this, this right-of-way that they, they're using is not the only way in to the property?
They purchased the entire property, so any existing right-of-ways would, would go with that property. Yeah, it hasn't been split off or anything like that. So there's no extinguishment of any easements or anything like that.
I see. Okay.
The photo depictions, I think are great and they meet, and they satisfy all the things that we've worked on, Donald and I and others, to mitigate, you know, the damage to the visual landscape. And I'm, what I would like to know is, are we going to post this information on the town's website? Because for those neighbors who may have some concerns, I think this would satisfy any objections that they, they may have.
We certainly can post it, it is available at the Public Utilities Commission site as well.
Good.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for bringing us a good one to him. Yep. The next item on the agenda is, believe it or not, other business.
Ooh, getting out of your business.
Carson, you were going. Thanks for all the work that you did over the weekend too, it was obvious from what I saw. It was not a play weekend.
I know we want to get out of here in a relatively still blue sky moment. Thank you to the community for coming out. For those that know, I work at the health system, I'm part of the team that helped put together some pieces of the weekend with Community Day, but it really was a huge lift by a lot of volunteers. I want to take a moment to thank Lindy Lynch. She was an integral part of Community Day for us. For those that know her and the effort she puts into this community, we can't do a lot of the great events this Bennington area does without her support. She rallies volunteers and I just want to take a special moment to thank her and all the volunteers that came out to make Community Day a major success. And for those that took part, I hope you enjoyed it and we really thank you for that.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of things. On social media over the last 24 hours, there've been, there's been a rash of complaints and accusations leveled at the town with respect to the poor condition of roads, particularly at Park Lawn Cemetery and right adjacent to the Deer Park. And I want to make it clear to the people of Bennington, and I'm pretty sure Stu and Dan will back me up on this, these are not town roads. These are state roads. And trust me, I, especially at the Deer Park, I travel that stretch of road every single day. And if you were in my truck with me, you would hear such a string of expletives that your hair would curl. But what we've been told is that the town, or the state is going to start the repairs in July. So this isn't the town's bad work or lack of concern, and I just want to make that clear. And secondly, with respect to Dermody Road and the repairs being done and the resurfacing at the airport, there's been significant damage done to Dermody Road. And the mayor of Dermody Road, who happened in an effort of full disclosure, is Maggie Dermody, who's my cousin. She brought it to my attention and we brought it to Stu and Dan's attention. And we thought we had come up with a way of rerouting the trucks to mitigate the damage and the state said no, without a really good explanation. Nevertheless, the contractors and the truckers involved in hauling the materials have been really good and have promised the town of Bennington that any and all necessary repairs will be covered by them. Is that right, Stu?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just want to make that clear to the residents in that area of town is that we're on top of it and we've gotten assurances from the contractors that all necessary repairs will be made. And thanks, Mayor Dermody. That's it.
Thanks, Stu. All set.
I have two things. One from Jean, she's not here, but she wishes she could be. The Mount Anthony Music Department visited Cleveland, Ohio on May 24th through 26th on the direction of Lynn Sweet, Mount Anthony Choral Music Director and Marjorie Rome, the MAU instrumental music director. Both groups provided a public performance at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and it was a great experience for all involved. Yay. And then second, I just want to let people know that on Monday, the 18th, from 10 to 12, right here, there will be a public hearing for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Southern Vermont. It's a time to come and just share your thoughts about how Wyndham and Bennington Counties can work together to build a stronger economic base. And that is the first of four hearings. So ours in Bennington is from 10 to 12 here. Later that same day, there'll be one in Manchester. And then on Tuesday, at the crack of dawn, there is one in Brattleboro. And then at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, there is one in Wilmington. So you're welcome. The hope is to get broad cross-section of information and people are invited to go, you know, within their own community and also to go outside their community just to hear the, the range of comments. There will be a write-up, there will be, you know, a summary of all those meetings so that we can all.
What's the date again?
This Monday and Tuesday. So this Monday at 10 here.
Between 10 and 12, yeah.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
I also want to echo the music and choral department, because while my son was on that trip and thoroughly enjoyed it and Lynn and Marge go above and beyond and Marge is retiring this year, so congratulations, Marge. And then senior awards night is Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the high school, so come out and celebrate the awards for our seniors and the honors they'll be receiving. And graduation is Friday night at 6:00 PM at Spinnelli Field. Hopefully, the weather looks good, we'll be outdoors, so.
It looks great, unusually so.
Yes, much more comfortable outside.
Yeah, dry, good. I have nothing further?
We do have, Dan and I have a very brief executive session on a matter of litigation. We do need to talk to you this evening, very quickly.
It wasn't on my agenda, but it's now on my plate. If we could move into an executive session for a litigation matter, I would appreciate it. Okay, thanks all for showing up tonight. Thank you.